Did you know the clap? A lot of people think it's chlamydia, it's gonorrhea.
I I didn't know, I do. I do know that, not I did know that.
Like a lot of people didn't know that.
I heard why it was called the clap and I think that it's wrong, but I really enjoyed the story that it makes urine crystallize in the urethra. And when people with penises get the clap, it makes it difficult to urinate. So what doctors used to do was have you sit with your legs open and your penis hanging and then they would clap it and break up the crystallization.
No, absolutely not. One hundred percent fucking bullshit. That is absolutely insane. What sadist? Came up with that fucking story to scare the shit out of like a high school Christian kid. So that they don't have sex with anyone ever in their entire life.
I mean, it worked on me until I was like sixteen, so.
Wow, I am. I thought that it was impossible for anything to cause any sort of uprising in my emotional being today after the week that I've had. And I am so disturbed and.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think that means we're back, baby.
We're back. Wow, that is horrifying and I hate it. I hate to think about that.
Yeah. So so speaking of clapping, did anyone when seeing the Barbie movie, did there, did anyone in the audience like give a standing ovation? Cause I feel like that.
I would like to applaud that segue.
That was good.
Um, I would like to clap for that segue. No, I know.
Ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together over your dicks.
Listen, y'all, take your dicks out and start clapping them.
I mean, before there were clapping cheeks, it was clapping dicks.
Clapping dicks.
Gotta start somewhere.
Uh, I saw the ten P M uh version on a Tuesday night. And so while the theater was full, I think it was a much calmer atmosphere than uh than a more raucous weekend crowd.
I saw it on a Friday night at seven with a bunch of librarians. Um, and I the the theater wasn't like jam packed or anything, but there was not, there was not any standing ovation. And I agree with that decision.
In that you didn't think it was ovation, standing o worthy, or that you just are anti standing ovation?
Oh, I know. I didn't think it was standing ovation worthy.
Hmm, okay.
I I would like to say that I'm also anti standing ovation in a theater like I I've never understood the point of that. Like you're not watching a play. Like the people don't care.
See you do that.
Yeah, like.
Live theater makes sense.
Right, exactly. Yeah, it just seems a little like masturbatory to like stand up in a theater and be like, great fucking job. It's just like, okay.
As if there's like a live feed to Greta's living room.
He's watching everyone watch the movie at home. She's like, oh. They got what I was trying to do.
Every Sacramento theater is played directly.
Yeah, everyone's just fucking creaming their chonies over it in Sacramento.
Yeah, yeah. So Shannon, I think that's a bit of a hot take. It's a good hot take to come back to uh this season. Um.
Happy to be back, bringing the takes.
What didn't do it for you?
I mean, all of it. Um. I feel I there was certainly, there were plenty of parts of of it that I thought were great. I think that like the um, the story, like the the fucking the the traveling between hu- human world and Barbie land was very weird to me. And I uh I just I think the other thing is that everybody loves this fucking movie. And all of the women are like, you have to go see Barbie because when you leave, you're gonna feel so empowered. And I'm like, dude, like, America Ferrera in this movie is just like all of us who have felt like pinned down by capitalism. But then we go home and listen to Jagged Little Pill and feel just a little bit better about the world like.
One was America Ferrera?
The mom of, yeah, the mom. I don't know why.
Okay.
I don't know. I just think that it's um, it's not like the wildly like it's not the feminist empowerment story that I thought it was gonna be is all I'm saying. Did I have a good time? Absolutely.
It's a romp. Yeah, it's a fun time.
That's what Nate calls sex.
Oh, I mean, I was, I was um. I was doing a little uh Paul Rubin's homage during the movie, so yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, yeah, I I see that now.
You got that?
I see it now.
Getting the dicks out, getting the dicks out.
But god, but god damn it.
Getting ready for the standing ovation.
Aw, too soon.
Oh, sorry, y'all. Well, yeah, I mean, I thought it was nice. It I was like, I I ate a pizza during it and or right before it and I kind of was having trouble staying awake. But it was a good movie.
Here's here's my hot take about the theater experience recently with everything being so fucking expensive. I thought that theater food was actually like pretty moderately priced. I I feel like they have not, they have not adjusted. It used to be that was like you were expecting to pay three or four times the amount that you would spend other places at the theater. But I got a little thing of pretzels, like pretzel little, you know, little pretzel balls. Um, and it was like, I think it was like five bucks. And I was like, okay, like that's they, you know, theaters usually charge. Yeah, that seems right, you know, and I I was, I think like drinks were like three and I was like.
Totally reasonable.
That seems like reasonable. I mean, I did just spend.
Hella better than the fucking Pete's Cobb salad that I got, which I love a Cobb salad. I went to Pete's before. Got a Cobb salad, hold the turkey and the bacon. I don't eat dead animals. And then it was just, right, only live dicks. Um, and then it was just like a bunch of fucking iceberg lettuce with like a tomato on. I was like, this is eighteen dollars. I should I should have eaten pizza at the theater.
Yeah. Um, also, if you go on a Tuesday night, six dollars, half price for a ticket to the theater. Amazing.
Yeah, we we saw Barbie on a matinee on like a Saturday and it was like, I thi- I think it was under ten bucks for a ticket, so.
That's amazing. They're just dying to get people in.
I mean, I was, I was impressed.
Comfy seats, cheap food. Yeah.
The seats are comfortable.
This season of Voices is brought to you by the theaters. I don't even know the names of like the.
Century. Century, the Arden.
This is how you can tell I'm not a. I'm not bought into capitalism. Like I can't even remember a brand name.
Is AMC even still around? Is that still a thing? Is I think Century like has a monopoly on the theater market. Yeah.
I think Century took them all. All, yeah, took all the all the movie theaters.
I remember Lowe's was one um in the Midwest. It was, thank you for coming to Lowe's. Sit back and relax.
Hardware store, man.
Enjoy the show. Well, it's that now, but there was a Lowe's Theater.
They they had diversified.
They do.
They dabbled in theater.
Hiding soil, tools and movies.
They diversified. It's smart because their theaters went went, you know, ass up.
Right, yeah.
Well, why don't we get started on this episode?
Oh, fine.
Speaking of ass up.
Speaking of putting your asses up, let's talk about the fucking news.
Oh, hello, everyone. You have Kemper.
Oh, and Shannon.
Yep, Gabe.
We're back. We're back. It's season, fall season twenty twenty three. How do we call it even? I don't even know.
It's season, we still hate the police and Sacramento is really struggling.
We're gonna be four years old next month. Four years since the 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 big comeback.
That's bonkers.
Yeah, it's wild. Um. Yeah, well, just to start, you know, we love what we do, folks. If you love what we do, if you remember what we do, it's been a while. Um, but come out and support us at Patreon dot com slash Voices River City for as little as five dollars a month. You can help keep this show running. Um, up to twenty five dollars a month, you'll get a T shirt and a mug. Uh, so you can have the little V R C thing on it. Um, and you know, every day I'm just so happy to meet and hear about new people. Uh, I will knock on doors sometimes for various reasons, uh, legal reasons and um, you know, people tell me that they they love the show and they recognize me and and I'm sure, you know, you all get it too. Um, and I just want to give a special shout out to a particular UPS driver who mentioned the show as well. Um, I mean, that's the kind of thing we're talking about. Although, al- also, by the way, uh, solidarity with all the UPS workers uh and their fight for uh a living wage and not just that, but uh, you know, their fair share of the profits that UPS makes. Um, but yeah, I just wanted to say that real quick, like it's just cool. It's just, it's nice. It's cool to feel like we're part of the community.
When you said that you knock on doors, I was wondering if you had converted to being a Jehovah's Witness.
Mm hmm. That's my.
Be quite a conversion.
Which, yeah, which sounds like a logical progression for you.
You're gonna, it's gonna, it's a whole new season and a whole new day. Um, but yeah, how are you two? How were your summers?
Uh, yeah, time, time goes by really fast, but I also have to say that like a mutual friend of ours commented at the end of this winter that they thought we were gonna have a very mild summer. And I was like, no way. Don't wanna, you know, don't wanna jinx it. And he's, you know, uh, he's a scientist and he knows a lot more about this shit than I do. Um, so I was crossing my fingers hoping for it, but I I mean, like it's in August and like every morning I still wake up and it's like fifty some degrees, which is great. Like the the fact that it's cooling down every night and we've only had you know, a couple handful of triple digit days in comparison to what it was like last year. I mean, this is it's an enjoyable time to be in Sacramento, which I don't think you can say very often in July and August.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true, though. The end of this of next week is supposed to be like a hundred and thirteen degrees or some shit like that.
Oh, for sure. We'll get some Satan butthole time. Don't worry.
Satan butthole. So here's the thing. When I was thinking about the temperature that I know is forecast for later, in my head, I said Satan's asshole. And I was like, that's not a thing. Who says that? I feel like maybe I picked that up on the fucking show. Anyway.
I like that Satan's asshole.
I think it's a, it's a legitimate measure of temperature that we can rely on.
It's it's fucking scientific, man.
It's an agreed upon unit of measurement, yeah. How many S A's or S Bs? Um, good. I guess we didn't really say too much about how our summers were, but.
I mean, I I I spent some time in uh Humboldt last week, which was great.
Nice.
So beautiful and it was really cool. And um, it was my first camping trip with our little dog uh or his first camping trip. Um, and he did surprisingly well, like he was able to sleep in the tent and didn't like freak out at every noise, which I thought he was going to do. Um, but our our older dog, who's a little over nine, um, doesn't do well with car rides. Like it always upsets his stomach. This is his stomach. So the entire time we were camping, he just had like explosive diarrhea. And he would wake up in the middle of the night in the tent and he would start like panting heavily. And I was just like, okay, like do you need some water? And then he would get up and just be like whine really loud and I would let him out and then he would just blow a massive diarrhea all over. And I felt really bad, but dude went through like three entire dog poo bag rolls on his own, like no help from the other dog. Like he was just shitting his guts out the entire time and I felt really bad for him.
Man, been there.
Hard to pick that up with a dog. Been there. Been there, been there while camping. That sucks. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oof, yeah. Yikes.
Uh, yeah, you were out there with uh our oftentimes host, uh PJ as well.
Yeah, yeah. PJ secured the spot and has a rating system for the spots at that campsite. I highly recommend talking to PJ about that because um he has ranked them and they are perfectly like that campsite's incredible. Uh, I couldn't have asked for more like beautiful environment to spend four days. You have no cell service. It's it's amazing.
That sounds great and terrible to me.
Yeah, that's pretty sick. I love that.
How about you, Shannon?
I don't, I didn't even know that summer was here. I feel like I've been like, not true, but I do feel like I've been living in a like what is time?
Mm hmm.
What what the fuck year is it mode? But I did this summer in early June, go to Vegas to see Garth Brooks. I feel like maybe I talked about this on the show already. Anyway, whatever, it was fucking sick. Um, had a great time.
Your husband wore another glorious outfit. I think we discussed that.
Oh, yeah, maybe we did talk about that on this show. Yeah.
Or we just talked about that in person, because that was an incredible outfit.
He did wear a good outfit and many friends of the show quickly commented on it. There were a lot of double taps.
Hmm.
Mostly from two cis het men who are friends of the show.
What what's a double tap?
That's a lot like.
When you like something, when you, the heart, instead of like pushing the heart, yeah. Um, yeah, but otherwise it's just kinda you know, it's just going. The days are going and I'm ready for fall. I'm a basic ass bitch, so give me that pumpkin spice latte season. Here for it. I also hate the heat. I'm like a miserable human being in the heat. So summer is fine. Busy.
Yeah. Well, here we are.
What about you, man? What what has your summer been like?
Yeah, what what has it been like? Um, I mean, working, working hard, uh, but also, you know, a few good, a lot of good hikes. Um, saw my first ever rattlesnake and it was a massive one um over by uh wah 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 um Stinson Beach.
Hmm.
Um, whatever, whatever the the forest is over there. Um, did some good hikes and I don't know, all around. Hit, I found like a random new lake in like outside of Lake Tahoe area like two weeks ago. That was just incredible.
Like, is this like a Christopher Columbus? He founded a new lake or?
No, me personally. Um, so like full narcissist, like things don't exist unless they're in my line of vision.
Right, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and yeah, just a pretty chill, read some books, fucked around, found out.
Found out. Did you find out?
I did. I found out hard. Um, well, yeah, we got, you know, it's gonna be quite a season, I think. Um, uh, there's obviously a lot going on here in Sacramento. Um, I mean, the the I guess the big question is where do we begin? Because it's kind of funny, like anything you talk about, I think there are A, there is kind of a feeling like everything, like a lot has happened, but also nothing has happened because it's all the same stories still. Um, so obviously, you know, the news of the day is is homelessness and then it's all of the different um campaigns, political campaigns that are amping up for twenty twenty four. Um, where do we want to begin?
Uh, but I think we could start with homelessness and I'm I can I start this with a a little personal story of ho- of of what's going on in in the city. So uh, I live in we'll call it like southeast Sacramento. I don't I don't really, really know what to call it. Um, but there was an abandoned church uh at the end of our block since twenty seventeen. Um, and I think in twenty twenty one, there was a push to turn and it's a huge, huge property, like the the amount of land. Um, uh, it it's a lot. I don't know how to measure land. It's a lot. It's like a big, a big old, big old plot of land. You could fit many a thing on it. Um, and there was a push to put some tiny homes uh for transitional housing. Um, and uh our city council member kind of uh tacitly supported it. Uh, not really, but you know, kind of pretended to. Uh.
Was this uh Sean baby Laloey?
No, not not Sean. Um, it it would be Eric. Eric's Eric's our guy.
Eric Father Gera.
Yes, for the time being. Uh, and.
I hope he remains a father.
Well, no, yes, of course, as a city council member.
Okay.
And uh, so there immediately a bunch of people in the neighborhood, NIMBY folks, were going around trying to get like the the neighborhood to to come out in full force against that idea and um, my wife and I got many arguments with our neighbors and and you know, were pretty vocal with why we were not against the idea of housing the unhoused. Um, anyways, so like six months ago, they finally started doing some work on it. And I was like, oh, did that like go through? Like, are they, are they gonna do it? And they've been doing amazing work. Like it looks great. Like this was an abandoned fucked up building with a chain link fence around it, like just filled with wild animals and you know, fox tails. Like there was all sorts of things living in it, not hu- not humans, just like, you know, a bunch of stray cats and dogs would find their ways in there. Um, so it looks really beautiful. They've been doing all this landscape. They've been painting it and I was all excited. I was like, maybe they're they're moving forward. Maybe they're gonna like turn this into to some kind of like transitional housing project. Um, the other day, uh, my wife was walking our dog and and saw the people out front and asked what they were doing because we hadn't really heard any confirmation and we found out that they're turning it into another church. And I was like, cool, cool. There is literally a active church at the end of our block. Like it's one, one street now with two churches on, one on each end. It's like, that's, that's definitely what we need more of. Um, and it it reminded me of a lyric from a Rage Against the Machine song, and I can't remember which one it is, but he says at the end of the song is all the world jails and churches. And I was like, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, that that lyric being a reminder that the final, final, final vote on the new billion dollar jail uh on the county level, Sac County level, has been approved. Um, it went through by a three to two vote, the two nays being Phil Cerna and Patrick Kennedy, apparently. Um, but uh, yeah. I mean, it's it it's more and more of i- i- this this entire show, our whole history has been sort of this kind of righteous anger and listening to folks who have to deal with, you know, um, a violent state. Uh, and sometimes you do get a little, I don't know why I'm not being the summer child this episode. Um, but like you it's just so fucking exhausting.
Yep.
Especially since their their um agenda yesterday, I think started at like eight thirty in the morning and people, people were lining up like all day to speak about this. Um.
And Sac Sac County Board of Supes does this by design. They they set their hours in a way that your average person who has to work all day cannot come and make their voice heard.
And and yet like community was was lined up on the phones, you know, it was a a ton of people were calling in and making their voices heard and their their opposition to this herd. And it was just like it doesn't mean anything to them.
Yeah, I I mean, the the county level's been frustrating for a long time. Like you you've seen some headway at at city council, at at least with, you know, some of the folks who've been elected in, but the county has just always looked like, like an immovable object, even when there have been really strong candidates for the the Board of Supes. Um, you know, there there are, there are some glimmers of hope. Darth Susan is is going to be leaving after uh this year. Um, but who knows who comes in next, you know? It's funny too, because you know, just because this is a Democrat county does not mean that that you're going to get much of anything from your board of supervisors. Um, four of them are in incredibly blue districts. The only one who's not is Sue Frost and her district is only Republican by two points. It's that's that's all the difference between Democrat and Republican there. So, um, yeah, it's just maddening at the county level and and they have all the purse strings, right? For for the city, for for all these different jurisdictions as far as mental health and and homeless services and all those things go.
Well, I'm glad that they're using that responsibly and doing something so beneficial to us all, like increasing incarceration, you know?
It has. Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, because that to them is their solution to homelessness.
Yeah. Um, have you all been paying attention to like this this fight between the county district attorney Tian Ho and uh Mayor Daryl Steinberg of Sacramento? The city of the very same city of Sacramento?
The very same. I have.
Uh, I have, I did. I I paid some attention yesterday. I was pretty uh busy but with work, but when I went through and looked at all of the things, I thought to myself, stay shitty Sacramento.
So incredible. So yeah, for folks who haven't been paying attention, basically in the last few weeks, month, month and a half, I guess this all started. A county judge wrote a letter to Mayor Daryl Steinberg. Obviously, the county courts are in downtown Sacramento within the city jurisdiction. Um, wrote him a letter basically saying like, actually, I've got the latest uh inside Sacramento, uh, our local Fash rag. Um, and so the publisher Cecily Hastings um quotes this letter from this judge named Michael Bowman. And here's what he he was saying to Mayor Steinberg. These daily incidents, so basically he was um citing the dis- disheartening environment and numerous encounters between unsheltered people and members of the public who need to be in court, including court employees, right? So he's claiming that that all these people trying to go to the courthouse um uh should not be dealing with with uh folks who are in house. And what he writes is these daily incidents include, but are not limited to, physical and verbal assault, public sex acts, open fires, nudity, urinating and defecating on walkways. He adds, court security removes unsheltered individuals who have no business with the court from the main courthouse daily and our facilities team must regularly remove feces and other waste from our entryways and grounds. Um, and so basically, he's trying to get the mayor to remove unhoused folks. Um, and citing all of these things that regardless of your housing status are already crimes by my book, right? I'm pretty sure I can't like do a public sex act in front of the courthouse.
I don't, no, I don't think that you can.
Okay.
Correct us if we're wrong.
Yeah.
Listeners. Because we got some shit to do if uh if if that's if we are wrong.
So i- i- and so after he did this, um, well, I I mean, Shannon, do you have any uh thoughts on on this uh this letter he wrote?
Well, I don't. I don't think I have any thoughts that will be surprising uh to our listeners. Um, I hate it. I hate to think about it. I'm so fucking tired of this bullshit. Like, there's no way we ju- we're not gonna police our way out of a crisis. So stop. Like it's just so it like, I was thinking about. It's just so, it like, I was thinking about this today while I was. Trying to prepare my brain for the show. Thinking like, what, what do I have to, like, what do I have to contribute to this conversation that is worth, that is worth anything or that is like? Something that hasn't been said before. And it's like, we have to have this fucking conversation so often that I feel like a goddamn broken record. And it's infuriating, like. That we continue to have to do this over and over and over again. Like, oh, I hate it. I just fucking hate it. So anyway. No, I don't have anything to say.
Yeah, I mean, so. So after this letter, which is ridiculous, and, and as Shannon said, it's like. The, there's already laws in the books against crimes. What he listed, most of these things, yes, crime, or. Some of these are like bodily functions that you have to do. And if no one is allowing you to do it anywhere, you gotta find a place, like say, defecating somewhere, right? And again, it's, it add, it's ad nauseam. Four years of this fucking show and we haven't changed a fucking tenor of that conversation. Um. Although I will say, I think Summit City Hall are actually starting to listen to that, um, which isn't to say. Um, the number needed are to actually affect some change. Um, five being the magic number on this, the day of the city council, because there's eight members and a mayor. But, you know, after this, you know, the, the Steinberg was like, oh, he's right, blah, blah. But then the district attorney, the new district attorney Tian Ho. Uh, of Sac County. He writes a letter to city council member Katie Valenzuela, who represents the central city, downtown, midtown, um, and soon to be East Sac. Uh, and he, he's basically. I mean, he's kind of saying the same thing, right? But he's. He's sort of. He's sort of accusing her and the rest of council of not. Uh, doing their duty in clearing out encampments in these areas. Um, but, but again, clearing out encampments is, is a violation of the Boise decision. It is cruel and unusual punishment. It's unconstitutional. How many times have we said that too? Um. And, but one funny thing I saw in that letter is this quote, he said. It should never be illegal to be homeless, but just because you're unsheltered doesn't mean that you can break the law.
Okay.
Like, where it's, you should never be illegal to be homeless. We just want to ensure. That everything that you will need to do in order to survive as an unhoused person is illegal.
Is criminalized.
Is criminalized. Well, that's the thing. It, and that's where they show their whole ass, right? It's like, you, okay, you. You're saying that and you're saying, you're agreeing that like it's these actions that are, you know, quote unquote crimes, but it's like. In response to these specific crimes you keep citing and yet like, you know, no one's getting arrested for them, like. What you want to do in response is criminalize the status of homelessness, all the people who did not do this. Yeah. By performing sweeps. Um.
And also just like pushing, you know, the, the DA arguing that, you know. Him coming into that position and essentially just being absolutely shocked and uh dismayed at how few citations. Were made, you know, and, and it is just like, what? I, I can't, I'm trying to imagine like what plane of reality people have to exist on. Um, to think that finding unhoused people is an effective fucking mitigation. Method, like. You know, the people that don't have anything, like let's make them give us money. Like surely that will deter them, like.
Right, right. Like he's, he's furious and, and I guess we can move on to that, like, but he's furious that our city isn't fining folks for things like, you know. Having, giving four feet of, of, of space on the sidewalk, you know, where their tent is.
I mean, there's just like. I don't know, would you, when, when your solution. To a crisis. Is to involve the carceral system or police or whatever, like. That's like, it's so fucking lazy. It doesn't solve anything. Uh, if all you do is create more rules, that's like, they're creating, it's, it's the creation of just like a backlog of bullshit. That they're gonna have to deal with because they're gonna, you know, cite, it's a misuse of resources, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Again. Something that has been said here before and not an original thought. Um, but as there is. Like, over and over and over these conversations around like. The solution is more housing, the solution is more supportive services, the solution is funding the Department of Community Response, which is that, you know, that's a city thing, but. All of those thing with the amount of resources and staff time that are being used. To deal with everything from writing a fucking bullshit letter to potentially like. Or to actually sweeping people and then citing them. What, what is that, that like definition of insanity is like doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result?
Right. I mean, and, and that's like the, i- it's all of these broken brained inside Sacramento. Um, reactionaries that it, that are like, things are getting worse. We should keep doing these horrific things. Oh, there's, there's Nate in the background. Sorry.
Oh, did he just peek his head in?
Yeah, with his little helmet on. Um, sorry, folks, you missed the best man in Sacramento, if you're not watching this. Um. But, you know, these, these reactionaries that are like, you know, all of our draconian methods aren't working. We should get more draconian. And they, they just don't hear themselves. They don't hear themselves and they think. They think though, because it worked, it worked in the nineties and the two thousands, that if you keep banging that drum, if you keep banging that crime drum, then, then they'll just get more people in prison. And at least their rich neighborhoods will be safer. At least their rich neighborhoods, you know, they won't have to see it there.
And, and I think that it's always interesting to watch them weaponize marginalized communities. For their efforts when they find that other tactics don't work as well in order to push their agenda, like. I, I mean, it's a tale as old as time. You know, the, it's, it's the whole, like, think of the children, right? You gotta think of the people who are, who are, are powerless to do anything else. So they'll, they'll weaponize. Uh, you know, disabled folks and say like, well, it's because they can't, can't walk on the sidewalk. Like, this is what we care, like, you don't give a shit. About that. You don't give a fuck about them. Like, you don't, you like, you are utilizing that as a, a, a tool to bludgeon. Overpolicing and, and like, the wording that the DA used. Like, if, to encourage them to take advantage of services that are offered through the police, like. Just like, you know, as the police are dragging away every single possession that you have, um, and throwing it into the garbage, um, you should talk to them. About some of the amazing services that the city will provide you. Like, what, isn't that?
All those resources we have.
This is such, so many resources, like, there are so many things that you could have if you just talked to the people that are literally stealing everything you own.
They, these shelter beds that they're offering totally exist. Believe them.
Right.
So you can believe them. Why, why, why wouldn't you trust them? They haven't done anything bad to you.
Right. No, I mean, these are our respected, you know, safe, safety officers. They're here to ensure public safety.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. We. Again, a thing that we have talked about with like. First of all, the cops are not the people that should be resourcing unhoused people. Because they're the same people who are criminalizing them and, you know, punishing them in a variety of different ways. Um. But. That's like. I don't understand. Why there is still the idea that resources in Sacramento exist for unhoused people, like.
It's wild. It's wild. It's, it's a fucking lie. Yeah.
It's bonkers and. If it were true, if it were actually true that the resources were available for anyone on any given night to go to a shelter, should um they be asked. Then there would be so many fewer people on our street, like, it, 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 it just wouldn't. It wouldn't look the way that it does, like, the resources don't fucking exist factually. They do not exist. What are they talking about? What are they talking about?
Yeah. Yeah. And, and thank God for Teresa Clift at the Bee, who, who includes this little paragraph in every article she writes on homelessness. It's that. There are twenty-three hundred shelter beds in the county on any given night, just about all of them are full. And like, it did like, and then she says, you know, there are over, like, in the last count, there were over ten thousand people, you know, experiencing homelessness. Like, this is. Because it is, it's simple fucking math. It's simple fucking math and the resources are not there and the people who do have resources are putting it towards our carceral. Punitive system. I mean, in, in like, you, you, you can draw a direct line. Um, and, and. Yeah, again, it's, it's, we've had this conversation before. Um, can we talk about a little of the drama that's going on at least? Like, cause this is kind of interesting.
Back and forth and back and forth.
Right. So there's this back and forth with the county uh DA and the city. The county DA is starting to say like, I'm gonna press criminal charges against electeds in Sacramento. Like, this is some Wild West shit, like. Um, imagine him, like, like, you know, trying to like cart away uh Steinberg in a, in a, in a paddy wagon. Um, uh, but like, this is, this is the tenor of, of, that he's using, right? Um. And so in response, you know, the, the, the city has, well, I guess in response on their own side, the city has done this other thing where they're. Basically giving the city manager, who we can definitely trust, right? Why couldn't we? Uh, carte blanche to.
Yeah, that guy's fucking great.
Yeah. Like, what could possibly go wrong?
Even one thing.
To open up like a, a bunch of safe grounds throughout the city, uh, really on his own volition with no oversight. Um, they're doing that so they can more quickly move people off the streets. And that is indirect response to these sort of legal challenges, I believe, by the uh district attorney. But then they're also going back and posturing against him and accusing him of politics, which I don't think is necessarily incorrect either.
Yeah, no, I, I, I. Seeing this like, take place in real time. Um. It, it was, it, yeah, it is, it is absolutely political theater. I just feel like they. I mean, the way that the political, uh, political call out structure is very reflective of just regular societal call out structure in the sense that like. You, you, you see these things happening between the district attorney and the mayor of a city and you're like, this is Twitter. Like, this is fucking like, no, you're, you're a fucking dick. Like, have you ever thought about maybe doing your fucking job? You fucking noob, you know, and it's just like, come on, guys, like. Well, you're the one, and you're like, you're the one that held the fucking press conference. You know, it's just like, shut the fuck up. I mean.
The wild, like. As I was watching the press conference and then like reading the pieces and the bee and like looking at the picture that the bee put out.
Oh, the picture of Tian Ho?
Yeah.
Asshole thing, like. So good.
It is, there is so much like toxic masculinity on top of. On top of just like. The bullshit, right? I, it feels. If I, if I didn't live in Sacramento and understand the political culture. Of local government here, I would. Wonder if it was made up like the Onion News, like, because it's so bonkers to me. The, the like call out back and forth and Daryl is not gonna let his city. Be whatever the fuck he said in that press conference. Not in my city, DA.
I'm sheriff of this here town.
Nope, it does. It reminds me of when I lived in Phoenix and Sheriff Arpaio would like threaten to arrest the mayor and actually did arrest the owners of the alt weekly. Um, just because he didn't like them. Like, this is, this is what it's starting to feel like in Sacramento. And it's really all over. It's over homelessness. Um, and, and of course, why wouldn't it be? Cause that's gonna solve it. Um, I don't know. I, I'm just really, it is interesting. I'm interested to see how it pans out because on the other end of it. You've had um Crystal at the SAC uh Homeless Union. Um, file a lawsuit um during these heat waves to, or file, you know, basically to get the city to stop doing these violent sweeps. That do result in harm, do result in deaths. Um, she got a judge, a federal judge to stop, to get the city to stop doing it. Um, for at least the next two weeks or so, give or take. And lo and behold, what is the city of Sacramento do? They just fucking ignored it.
Surprise, surprise.
Yeah, they disobeyed. There, there is like clear evidence of it. Not only is there clear evidence of it, they just straight up fucking admitted that like, yes, we did. On this Friday and this Monday. So now the city is on the line for that. So the city is on the line for draconian cruel, unusual behavior. Le- legally on the line for this against our unhoused community from this side. And then they're on the line, uh, line on the other side from our. Fashi little district attorney, who is saying, you're not being cruel or draconian enough. We need you to be even worse to these folks. And it feels like a pimple, something's gotta pop.
Yeah, it, it's.
It feels exactly like a pimple.
A gigantic pus.
Been a while since I was a teen, but.
It's like those ones that you get like on the inside of your nose.
Oh, yeah.
Like in the eyebrow.
Never goes away.
Yeah. I mean, I think the, the like district attorney. Looking at the situation and just being like, I, okay, I, like, I get it. Like, you're sweeping them. That's fine. But have you thought about levying a fine on top of that? Because I wanna see citations on my fucking desk in the morning. And it's just like, all right, like, yeah, like, yes, you're evil, but not, not evil enough.
It's so funny to me. And, and like, we, I think we've said it before on the show, like, for better or worse, our side has won the rhetorical fight. That like. You are not allowed to just say absolutely disgusting things about unhoused folks without, without dealing with consequences in this town. What you do now, if you wanna do cruel things to them, is you do the little like, you know how we do the compliment sandwich when you're trying to like. What they do is the like, we love unhoused people sandwich before they say, and after, um, like. We must do horrendous things to them and not provide them with the actual services or help that they need. So, you know, Tian Ho did that. Um. I think. He is quoted all over this goddamn rag uh inside Sacramento. By the way, they, they have this columnist, Ari Grasswich. Um. And the mayor called him out, a, a little bit more political theater on Twitter, um, for not living in Sacramento. That is true. I, I believe he currently lives back in your old stomping ground, Shannon, in uh Long Beach. Um. And he's, he's down there six hours away, but writing, writing three columns a month in this, in this thing, like he knows what's going on around here. Um. But. Anyway, I, there was a quote, I, I, again, I think it was by Tian Ho. Um, oh my God, Grasswich has a piece about being a landlord too. This paper rules.
I love when I get it delivered to my porch.
Oh, yeah. All right. Well, I can't find the quote. Um. Alright, well, I can't find the quote, um. But. But it is, it's that, that sandwich of like, listen, they need our help. I, I care for unhoused folks and then it's like. That's why we must imprison them and give them fines. And make it so that they never feel peace again.
There, there's a, a quote in that SACB article, um, where he says, and we have to remember. That the voices for the victims need to be heard. And I was like, oh, is he gonna, like, it's just the voices of the unhoused, cause like, they're, they're. Clearly the victims in this story, but no. Those were not the victims that he was talking about. He says, I mean, I ha- I have an example. Don't ask for the evidence of this, of a woman who had her window broken so many times that she had to put styrofoam up. Because she got tired of replacing them every day. I can like almost guarantee that that didn't happen, like just app, like. I'm, I'm not trying to dismiss the fact that like, there are people who have probably had property destroyed, whatever. I, I can like almost guarantee that this story did not happen and no one is going to ask for evidence. No one's gonna ask for that person's name. He can just say whatever the fuck he wants. And use some anecdotal fucking. You know, made up story and just be like, these are the voices of the victims that we have to remember, remember, hey, hey, remember people? You amplify the voices of victims, remember that, remember, so I'm gonna do that now. And, and I'm gonna pull at your heartstrings with the styrofoam window story.
Yep. There, there's the element too, where it's like, I don't know why they, folks feel the need to lie. It's like, yeah, we're all impacted by homelessness, but it's like. Normal people, feeling people capable of empathy are like. There's a reason this is taking place. There's a reason why things are the way they are and. If we took better care of each other and we treated housing as a human right and, you know, all of these other things, then. This all goes away. It's pretty fucking simple.
I think. Yeah.
They're over complicating it for sure and, um. Being shitasses in the process.
Yeah, I would say shitasses is the, um, correct term.
It's the what?
It's the correct term.
It's the appropriate unit of measure.
I feel like it's.
It's, it's their Christian name.
Yeah, it's the most mild. Of names I could call them.
I mean, honestly, being, being a shitass and. In like the objective term is like what you would expect of an ass. To be full of shit, yeah.
I don't know what else is going on there, yeah.
And that, friends, is science.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, um. I do think, I do think generally, um, our side is winning and I think there's more of us within city limits. I don't know if. The fight ever, at what point it starts getting one at the county level. I think you can elect people into our school boards and into city hall that, um, actually do believe that. Housing is a human right, but the problem is that the purse strings are at much higher levels and it costs a lot of money to make affordable housing. And. That's why where we are today. Have you seen? The initiative by council members, Valenzuela, Vang and Maple? Called like. Sacramento Forward.
Sacramento Forward, which. Listen. I think I should have gone with a different name. Cause there's Sacramento Steps Forward.
They should have called it Sacramento Leaves Forward.
Sacramento Moves Forward, Sacramento Segues Forward, Sacramento Rollerblades Forward, I don't know. But if Sacramento is going fucking forward. That's fine, just find another way to talk about it. Because I was real goddamn confused when I was reading. The fucking X formerly known as Twitter. And saw that shit, so.
It felt like twenty fourteen all over again, actually, yeah, seeing that name.
Did not. Did not appreciate, I, I worked for that organization, so it does something to me on the inside when I see the name. Anyway, continue.
I mean, branding aside, what did we feel about this? Um, you know. This, this initiative, um. Includes building more affordable housing, obviously, that's something we need for low and very low income households. Stop people from losing their housing, um, and there's a, a number of very tangible things here, enact just cause eviction protections. Require reporting of any eviction notices to the city. Establish and fund the right to legal counsel for tenants and landlords. Reduce annual rent increases to align with regional income growth, which I like. And limit rent increases during tenant turnover. With a process for hearings to allow exceptions. Um. Couple other things, prevent corporate purch- purchases of property, I think that's a, uh, a no brainer. It's called Sacramento Opportunity to Purchase Act. Um, stop the race to bottom for the wa- for wages, you know, this is one to make sure that the folks building these. These affordable housing units are paid what they're deserved and, um. You know, interestingly, this seems to be a, uh. The subject of debate in affordable housing, uh, spaces. And then finally, um, generate funding with a twenty twenty-four ballot measure, which appears to be. To be named later. What are our thoughts on all this? I mean, this is pretty comprehensive, more comprehensive than I've seen from any council member.
Yeah, I mean. Cool, let's see, let's. Let's see where it goes. I'm so fucking jaded.
It's same, I hear you, same, it's, it's like, a- anytime, any type of, of. Bill measure policy gets introduced, I expect not only. In its original form that it won't pass. Um, but I just, yeah, I like, I don't like to hold my breath and, and give out hope for that kind of stuff, cause it's just like, well. Sure, like, you, you can, you can propose whatever you want, but, um. At the end of the day, are we gonna be able to garner enough support to? I mean, I, I would say garner enough support to even push it forward, but it, it really doesn't matter what we think at the end of the day, it's, it, it comes down to. You know, our electives, our electeds. Um. And, uh, you know, I, I think that it's. It's one of those situations where like having the solutions presented in a, um. And in easy to understand. Way, so that people can see it, can help push the conversation. And in that sense, it's always a good thing to put forward the, these proposals and solutions. Because if, if our, if. People who have been bludgeoned over the head with the idea that this issue is so complex that it's not, like, we can't fix it. Are able to see that like, hey, here's A, B, C, and D of how we can fix it, or at least take. Uh, steps in, in, you know, move forward in the direction towards fixing it, then, then people. Are not as easily swayed towards this over complication of the issue. And I, and I think that's important, and maybe I have too much faith in people. But I do think that the average person. In Sacramento wants to see a solution. And I'm like really crossing my fingers on this, like, wants to see a solution that does not include like literally just murdering the unhoused, like. I'm, I'm hopeful that like the average person wants, wants to see people taken care of.
I don't know if I'm hopeful that the average person wants to see people taken care of, wants to see unhoused people. Taken care of.
Yeah.
It, yeah, I, I mean, I don't, yeah. That brings up a lot, the I, the idea that the most people don't want unhoused folks taken care of, but. It's not like, but well, I guess I have to remind myself, I do have to remind myself that lots of the. Sort of like public facing messaging that gets. Attention. Is the shitty stuff, right? It's the like. Shitheads in ESAC that are. You know.
Some might call them asshats.
Um. And so maybe there, I mean, I know, like personally. There's, I, there are like eighty-five people that work with me. Uh, you know, doing the work that I do with unhoused folks and. They don't wanna see them harmed, so I know that there are at least eighty-five people. Plus the co-hosts of this show. Plus my spouse that do not want to see. Unhoused people harmed. And like probably all of our patrons. So we're looking at hundred and fifty people. We got this.
It's a good start.
And, and I would say that as, as someone who used to teach. The, the now. Voting aged populace, um. I would say that ninety-nine. Point five percent of my students really cared about unhoused people. And that was always something that was. A really, uh, significant glimmer of hope for me was that I was like, oh, fuck, like, okay, these kids get it, like. They, they see what's happening and they weren't, they're not falling for. The ESAC narratives, they're not following for this bullshit, they, they understand that like. You have to give people housing, you cannot have a functional society. With a growing unhoused population.
Yeah, I tend to agree, and, and also, by the way, I, I, our average episode gets like. Give or take four hundred downloads and views, so it like, that's, that's pretty good too, um. But, you know, the. That's always the question, it's like, are we in our? Bubble or are they, you know, the inside Sacramento? Rich pricks in their own bubble and maybe it's true, maybe it's, maybe the fact is we all are.
Maybe we're all in bubbles, we're all in our respective bubbles.
Bubbles. But. But, I mean, it just, again, it just comes down to. The, getting our message out there, working with the people we know and love to, to get them to think more. Deeply and, and empathetically on these topics, um, and, and, you know, shifting an entire zeitgeist, which is never easy, it's, it's Sisyphean, it's long. And then, uh, you know, on top of that, like. I think it, to that. What Katie, Katie and Mai are doing. If nothing else, if they can't get two more votes on something like this, it is a bully pulpit. Uh, it is something that will reach more ears and make more people think. And, you know, in the off chance that we get more like-minded people on that dais. Uh, in city hall, then maybe we could en- enact some of these. Um, you know, affordable housing and, and homelessness, uh, measures that are more. Centered around human beings and empathy than around, uh, simply harming folks who have nothing.
Yeah.
Encouraged.
Well, I guess we, uh, I guess we gotta call this one, huh?
Wow, incredible way to end the show. We started. Up here. Feeling good, talking.
Gonorrhea.
Clapping dicks.
Clapping.
Dick clapping.
Did, did this episode just take a bar- a Barbenheimer? Approach, where like, we, we started, we started all like pink and frilly and then we just went to the bomb.
We are so connected to pop culture that we couldn't tell. But.
Great callback.
A Barbenheimer approach. Do what I can.
We're three weeks late on this reference, but we've been gone all summer, so we, we had to bring it in.
Just know in your heart that I've been making terrible references the entire time we've been gone.
I've been talking about dicks, farts and all kinds of inappropriate shit while we've been gone, so.
Same.
Anyway.
Alright, well, I guess we're calling it. I don't know if you guys noticed, I, I live in the, uh. Van Ness Holiday Inn now.
So I did see, I did see someone, uh, leaving the hotel earlier. I didn't say anything, I didn't wanna call them out.
Friend of the show.
I didn't say it either and I didn't like, uh, in the moment, I was, I think I was looking the wrong way and I was like, oh my god, is that someone naked?
There was no one naked.
But no one was naked.
His yoga pants, which are very close.
Yeah, I know.
Nate now, are we talking about shoes?
That person has, does have monkey legs. I have seen them.
Flower printed.
Weird.
Alright. Well, let's call this one and we will see you all next week.